One at each building, middle school, high school, and there is one o'clock because Vicki donated the one o'clock. So there's nothing at the greats.
Good evening. Thank you. This is the March 26th meeting of the Oxford School Committee. I now will call the meeting to order. Tonight is our public hearing. We will open the public hearing at 6:15. Right now, we're going to hear from our student representative, Ryan Donovan, who's going to tell us what's going on at the high school.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have too much today since a couple of my contacts have been out, but I have a lot from student council and NHS. From student council, the spring conference for CDMASC will be here on April 26th, and we're still in the planning stages of that. And we've got just about a month until then, so we're all getting really excited and everything's being done according to our plans. We had an Easter event here last weekend, and it was very successful. We had games and crafts and an Easter egg hunt and a visit from the Easter Bunny, and we were very successful in that, and we made about $210. The Walk for Hunger in Boston will be held on May 6th, and we hope to have another group of students go there this year, and hopefully everyone will do the full 20-mile walk or run. And our future plans for the spring include a senior citizen dinner, a murder mystery dinner, a talent show, our elections, and a teacher appreciation luncheon. From National Honor Society, the induction ceremony will be held on May 1st here at the high school from 6:00 to 8:00, and that's a Tuesday. And the class of 2013's junior prom will be held on Friday, April 27th, at Leicester Country Club. And the class of 2012 senior prom will be held on Thursday, May 17th, at Union Station in Worcester. From the theater department, the spring musical, How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying, will be held here on April 11th, 12th, and 13th. And finally, from Operation Graduation, this Saturday, they are holding a breakfast with the Easter Bunny from 7:00 to 12:00 in the cafeteria.
Very good. Do you have anything on ROTC inspection?
I know it's this week, but the committee wasn't here.
That's okay.
It's Wednesday, right?
It's Wednesday.
Yeah. ROTC also has inspection on Wednesday at -- doors open at 5:00. Inspection starts, I think, at 5:30. Okay. Thank you very much, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Very good. Okay, moving on. We now will do the approval of the minutes from our March 12th meeting, please.
It's all moved.
Second.
Thank you. No call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, five affirmative. Those meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much. I am going to go into some other business that I have before we open the public hearing, if that's all right with everybody. It's going to take our agenda a bit out of order, but since we have time to spare, I'd rather do that. I did receive a letter from the Board of Selectmen regarding the relinquishment of 5 Sigourney Street. They have taken back the building as of January 10th, so we no longer have any more ties or anything to that building. It is now back in the hands of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Matthew, maybe you could just touch upon the meeting that Mr. Peterson, yourself, and I attended. This might be a good prelude into the public hearing. Last week, we were invited, everyone, the whole area was invited, to Dudley Library with State Rep Durant, State Rep Kuros, and State Rep Fatman, I think that was it, and Roger Hatch from DESE, to discuss the Chapter 70 formula, which I think even left me more confused.[285.52][285.52](LAUGHING) Sorry to say. I think all of us have tried to understand that formula. It's a very complicated, in-depth way of funding public education, that's for sure. And I'm thankful that we have a business manager who gets it, because (LAUGHING) it is difficult to say the least. But I think some of the questions that were asked at that meeting and the concerns that were brought up were the same concerns that we hear over and over and over again. So I'm hoping that maybe, you know, we see some action. I know action at the state side is slow to go, but let's see if there's something that they could help us with, with Chapter 70. But, Mr. Matthew, if you could maybe just touch upon some of the points, and, Mr. Peterson, if there's anything you'd like to add. I think it's good that the public knows that we did attend this event. You know, we're trying to do it for the benefit of our students here, so, please, sir.
Well, I did find it interesting that Roger from the DESE had indicated that they were doing their own study about Chapter 70. As the committee may or may not be aware, the Mass Association of School Superintendents, along with the Business Managers Association in Massachusetts, did put out a study in the past couple of months discussing Chapter 70 and the formula. And everybody points to a couple of areas where the formula just really has not kept up to the times. And that's not to say that the entire formula has kept up to the times, because it was created in 1993 and really has only had adjustments for inflation since then. But two factors that are blatantly behind are health insurance or employee benefits in the proper lingo for this particular exercise, as well as out-of-district tuitions. Those two areas, you know, do have very major impacts on every school district in the Commonwealth. The formula for the net school spending computation of health insurance leaves many communities drastically behind. And I can, just looking at Oxford, we're almost $2 million in the hole between what we actually spend for health insurance versus what the Commonwealth allocates for us. And that's a tough starting position. So if they can do something to adjust that piece of the formula, I think every school district will be better suited to proceed into the future with a better handle on all of the costs that are made up in the Chapter 70 formula, and hopefully a better way to deal with, you know, one of the areas that's very expensive for everybody. Obviously, health insurance is not cheap, whether you're working in the private sector, the public sector, or have your own business and are actually an owner. So seeing the state recognize it, even though they may not necessarily be in a position to fund it, because those two items alone, I think, account for about a $2 billion shortfall. That's more than 20% of the state's Chapter 70 money, I believe. Recognizing the issue is the first step. Finding a solution to at least mitigate it would be a nice second step, and hopefully we'll see some action for that.
I hope so. I think that they know that the pressure is on, you know. That room was relatively full, so those that were there are there because they're very concerned, and I think everyone left there still very concerned. Mr. Peterson.
There -- yes, thank you. It was interesting, and at least Mr. Hatch knows the formula and how the manipulations are going, and didn't outright say, "We're getting our fair share," but he did come to a couple of the community and say they were. And under the new -- not the new formula, but what they're doing is actually enforcing the formula, which they hadn't before, and everybody, including the Newtons, the Wellesleys, and all the more affluent towns, were getting basically the same shares that we were as a lower and lower income. And one thing he did explain, which a lot of people didn't understand, was the wealth, the property and the income, how they determine the wealth of a community and what you should be able to contribute yourself as a community before the formula kicks in, that the state matches it up as far as what you're supposed to spend per pupil. So that's one thing that I did find interesting, that they finally recognized that, and are holding some of the more affluent communities to the fire. And so some money, and the insurance that Mr. Matthew alluded to, they offer GIC for municipalities and towns, but even the 10% that jumped on it has saved us, I don't remember the figure, some millions of dollars, which is good. But I also spoke with Mr. Kuros, Mr. Fatman afterward, and Fatman had to leave, but I'd spoken to him before, that they are not offering the same GIC benefit to the cities and towns that I have as the state or that he has as a state representative. Even at different state levels, there's three different series to the GIC program. So a lot of the cities and towns aren't jumping on it because it's still more beneficial to them, a smaller town like ours, to keep Blue Cross or whatever as their major carrier, as an example. That they are looking at adjusting, and there was one other piece I had. But I am going to be on the Hill tomorrow again, fighting the same battle, talking to basically the same people. I have a meeting with Senator Moore at 10:30, so if anybody has anything that needs to get to him, let me know tonight. I'll be up there all day tomorrow. It's the Associations Day on the Hill, and along with the Superintendent's Associations, the School Committee Association had prepared a document four, five years ago, which never got off the ground, which we're resubmitting, along with the Superintendent's Association and the Business Managers Association again, to try to move it forward. Because basically, the formula needs to be readjusted. The way they're doing it isn't wrong, it's just that the way the money is actually being leveled out to adjust the formula, and the bottom line, as I told you before, the formula, they've been afraid to adjust because outside the 128 quarter is not where they get their votes. And they are protecting their towns at this point while they try to adjust the formula and not hurt them and try to give us more, and not taking something away from theirs, which is where 70% of the vote comes from in this state, 128 East. So that's another issue that's being addressed at this point in time. But again, like you said, Brenda, they finally recognized it and are addressing it, and not being able to protect some of those cities and towns out there like they were in the past. They're going to have to find a fair and equitable way to distribute to all cities and towns. So that's about it. But anything that you have, I am going again tomorrow, so let me know.
Thank you, sir. The only other comment that I'll add to this is that -- come on in -- that we have to keep the pressure on them. I know that there's going to be a significant change in this committee, and I hope that we can rally the new forces that be to make sure that we keep up the campaign, that the Chapter 70 formula does need to be reviewed, does need to be a full review, actually, of the formula and how it is divvied up is probably one of the biggest passes that we need to keep the pressure on them for. Mr. Matthew?
Just as a follow-up, per our discussion after that meeting, I did put together the historical numbers for Oxford for net school spending, required school spending, our actuals versus required, and where we were in comparison, at least, to the statewide average as well. I know everybody just received that tonight, so I'm not necessarily looking to have a discussion on these numbers. I'd rather that you take a look and absorb them. But I think there's some very interesting information in here, both about the statewide trends and the trends for Oxford itself.
The trends for Oxford, I think, are very interesting, and I think we'll put this on the agenda for our next meeting. Mr. Peterson?
I did look at those, Mr. Matthew. I find them interesting, because as you know, or the rest of us know, the state's figures are always two to five years behind that we're using, and I guess they're up to two years at this point, what they call current. They're still two years off the pace for what they use for figures. But as I told you before, as I leave this chair, I am not leaving the fight for you. I still will be at the Association on those two committees that, anytime you want, you can call me or get to me. I will be working at that level, so that you will still have a voice there and not just at this chair.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone in the committee? Let me just check my time here. I'm right on time. The time being 6:15. I now will call the public hearing of the Oxford School Committee to order. This is a time for anyone in the audience, if you have questions or comments or concerns, to come forward. If you would like to come forward, just if you don't mind, if you would just maybe stand to the side over here, if you want to form a line, and please feel free to do so one at a time. I'd like you to state your name and your address for the record. Tonight, we will take everything that you have to say, any questions, into account for this budget. The budget amount that we are carrying right now is $14,899,948. That is the budget that we are going to vote this evening after the public hearing. So please feel free to speak freely. Don't be afraid. Don't be shy. Relax. This is your moment, really. This is why we're here. We want to hear what you have to say, and we welcome it. So anyone would like to go first? Any comments, questions? That's what a public hearing is. I have nothing. Mr. Matthew?
If I may, as the committee is aware, but the public may not be, the budget as presented, the revised down to $14,899,948, does allow Oxford to be in a different position than previous years. In previous years, we were looking at how many positions or how many dollars were we going to have to cut from our operating budget in order to meet the allocation. This year, because of the Chapter 70 formula and the required school spending numbers and the town's formula, we're actually in a position, at this point in time at least, to be looking to hold on to every position that we had, as well as possibly add one or two additional positions as the budget finalizes itself. So I think we're sitting in a much different position this year than we have the last two years.
I agree with you, and I think that we all have voiced our opinion to our superintendent to let him know that the money will go back into the classroom this year. There's much work that needs to be done. There's many programs that need to be brought into our schools, and we have let him know that, that this year will be the year where we start to take that trend and move forward with it. We're not going to -- we will not allow any more, I guess gaps is the best way to put it, when it comes to what needs to be done in the classroom. It's going to take time. It's not something that's an overnight cure, but we have let him know quite strongly that the money that we do have, the way it's going to be spent, is at our purview. We dictate how that money is spent, and it is going to go back into the classroom. There won't be any more, I guess, the best way for me to put it so that everybody understands it is that we're not going to take away, we're going to start adding back in. So that's one of the goals of this committee. Anyone? Come on up. Just your name and address, and the judge is going to just put it on the record.
206 Fiddler Hill Road. My question is, is this Chapter 70 money guaranteed?
Nothing. If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Nothing is guaranteed from the state until it's finalized. What we have in front of us is the governor's preliminary budget. It still has to go through the House as well as the Senate, and then they need to agree on final numbers. And sometimes that happens before our town meeting in May. Sometimes that doesn't happen until July.
So is this $14 million budget what you're anticipating coming from the Chapter 70?
The --
Go ahead, Rich.
The budget is given to us by the town through a formulaic approach, so this is what they've allocated for us at this point in time.
So if we -- I'm trying to understand this. So the Chapter 70 money, then, would this be a bonus on top of our $14 million?
It's included.
No, it's included.
It's already included.
It's already included. So that dollar amount could change, fluctuate, depending on what's given, correct?
Yes.
Brenda?
Go ahead.
It's not likely. This is pretty much solidified at this point in time. The Department of Revenue has approved the town's finances, and that's the share that we're going to get from the town and from Roger Hatch. The other night, I didn't bring mine with me. We have the exact figure from the Chapter 70 monies, but that's inclusive in the 14-8. It's already in there.
That's what I was just --
Something -- I'm going to make a comment that might help. When I first started trying to understand all this, a municipal budget is completely different than any kind of your home budget, a business budget. It's almost backwards.
Okay.
And because it is, we have to do all this work first, and then we find out, almost in June, usually, I think it's mid to late June. I mean, we have our town meeting in May, we're voting again in May, but then in June, we're told, or I should say, the town is told, and then they filter it to us, what the actual figures are. So it's a very complicated and it's a very strange way to do business, because it comes down to it is a business. So what we've -- I think there's been some fluctuation in the budget in years past. I have not seen in the past couple now much change, and if it is, it's minimal. I know that the town tries to hold to it, but it's the state is where we'll see some changes. If they -- the way they're going to vote now, we have to wait for them to do their work. It's a very --
I get where you're coming from. I understand.
Yeah. I mean, this is what we're hoping for. This, of course, we'd like more, wouldn't we? Everyone does. Every town, every district, they all want more, but this is what we're holding to right now.
Now, you had said that with this extra money, that you were hoping to replace some of the positions that we had lost. Has anybody determined what positions would be replaced?
I think that that is still part of the conversation, because we have retirees, we have some more information that needs to be gathered, and I think we'll have a better idea come town meeting, where we stand with that. Mr. Peterson?
One thing that we're pretty much secured with this year, the governor has, basically, this will be the first time in a long time that any governor has said he's going to hold education harmless. So the monies that they're preparing in the state budget presently, he's actually increased a little bit this year and is going to hold fast to that, to keep education still on course where it is without any more cuts. Our only problem is, we only get the money every six months. So we have to do our budgeting, spend our money, and then wait for the state's money to come. So if something happens, these are all voted budgets, but if the money's not there, there are a couple of situations that we had over the years, the money wasn't there, and we did not reinstate or pay for positions that weren't able to be paid for.
All right. I understand that. Okay.
It all is the money that comes in. Without it, if it's not in our pocket, you can't spend it. And I, for one, will not spend something or prepare an astronomical budget of $16 million knowing you're never going to see the money.
Absolutely.
I budget reasonably and equitably and try to keep it, my personal vote on it, is in line. There are years that we have been able to, and we've struggled to level service, and there's a difference between level servicing and level funding. If they level funded us at the 14-3, something that was on there last year could have meant cuts or no lights in certain rooms at certain times of the day, which we've done before. But at this point in time, we're going to be able, it looks like, to level service with some minimal replacements.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? No other questions or comments? I will now close the public hearing. Okay. Going through the agenda, anything else from our business manager?
I know there was some talk of possibly discussing the calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rich, hold on one second. I'm sorry. My mistake. Forgive me. We need to, I'd like to entertain a motion to vote our budget of $14,899,948, please.
It's all moved.
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Our budget is approved. Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, Rich, go ahead.
I think there was some talk of trying to approve the calendar this evening, but I'm not sure where Mr. Peterson's committee stands, so.
Mr. Anderson?
Tomorrow, two weeks ago, you told me to form a committee, which I have gone out and done. I have two teachers, five parents, an administrator, Mark Peterson and myself. We will be meeting tomorrow at 3:30 at the Chaffee School, and if anybody else would like to get involved, I'd appreciate it if they show up. You asked for the committee. I gave you the committee. To vote on this, I would like to table this one more time.
Okay. No problem. Thank you very much. We will hold the calendar until our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Rich? Thank you. From the school committee, Mrs. Conan?
The only thing I have is the ROTC inspection this week, Wednesday at 7:00. And that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Raveli?
Just a reminder that the curriculum committee will be meeting again at the end of the month, oh, end of next month, sorry, April 24th, 4:00. We changed the date so that other people can come in time.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Just to say, if anybody would like to get that committee, 3:30 tomorrow at Chaffee School, and we'll be starting then.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Just one more time. I think I'd beat it to death now, but day on the Hill is tomorrow, and anything you can get to me. I asked, well, there's a couple of things, but you did talk to me today, Mr. Matthew, about a few things, but you were going to get to me tonight, but I'd like the committee to know too, because this is an ongoing situation, that there's legislation pending that will affect us eventually. And what I'm talking about is the defibrillators from the disaster we had down in Quabogue with one of our football players, even though he was a Sutton resident, was still one of our football team that passed away during the game, had a game. And I'd asked you to go through the buildings or find out. I know that one was donated, and one was donated to coffee, and my knowledge is that there was one here at the high school and one in Project Coffee, and I'd like to know how many are in the rest of the buildings, where and where they are.
There's one in the middle school, and I don't believe there are any at the elementary schools.
So with both buildings being two-story, we only have one at each of the high school and middle school then, and then one in Project Coffee, I know is there and it's easily accessible. At this point in time, to get a jump on some of this, and I'd like the rest of the community to be somewhat interested, I am going to donate to myself, to this community, and I would request that, I called Chief Wilson today, not Wilson, Chief Bemis, and she was not in the office today, and I'm not sure where they came from. I know that they were purchased through the fire department, and I would like you, Mr. Business Manager, to set up an appointment with Miss Bemis and find the particulars and get back to me, so I can take care of at least two before I leave this committee.
I'll mention it at the department head meeting tomorrow.
Okay. It will be out of my pocket, so I will need to know where, or if she has to purchase some, and I have to pay the fire department or who, but let me know, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'll let it go at that tonight, ma'am chair.
Thank you. I have been asked, just to remind the community, that there will be a benefit on May 5th for Eric Spitz, who has been moved over to fail-on rehab, which is great news for Eric and his family. The benefit will be May 5th at the BFW in Oxford at 6:00. Donation is $25, and tickets are available at the central office and all of our schools. That is all I have this evening. Anything else from the committee? Motion to adjourn, please.
It's all moved.
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Sorry.